I have a call this meeting to order, roll call please, Ms. Statement.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher.
Here.
Mrs. Conkle.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
And Dr. Wargland.
Here.
Please rise and join me in allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Move the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion by Mr. Canwisher, second by Ms. Conkle to approve the agenda presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Vision statement, it is a vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in all things, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening, if you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so, all you have to do is come up to the podium, give your name and your capacity within the district, and you will be allowed three minutes to address the board on a non-agenda item. If you are going to say anything, please keep any names confidential, and although we do hear you, we will not respond to you because it is a non-board agenda item. Anybody here who would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda board item? Seeing none, we'll go to the board members. Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Ms. Canwisher.
Welcome back to the teachers and staff.
Brockman.
Hi, echo your question.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler. Okay. Ayers.
I think just welcoming back the students as well, it's been a quick semester, but also to the staff.
Ms. Conkle.
On that bandwagon, welcome back everyone.
Wonderful. I'll go on to the administrators in a second, but I just wanted, on behalf of the board, I wanted to send condolences to the family of John Hughes, he was a pedestrian that passed away due to injuries sustained after a bus accident that occurred about 11 days ago here in Bentonville, so from the board and the whole Pleasant Valley community, we want to send our condolences to the family, his family. All right, let's see here, I'm gonna do this in the right order now. How about you, Mr. Smith?
I have nothing.
Okay. I'm gonna start.
You can skip me.
Sure, okay. Are you gonna, I'll wait for you.
Okay.
Ms. Ganyan.
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hyatt.
We have celebrations to share here in a moment, so.
Okay. All right, Ms. Sin.
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Ms. Damon. Mr. Struce.
I'm just gonna give everybody a real quick weather update with what you're saying, kinda where we were across the district. Overall, for the most part, there was concerns about, you know, just where's the air conditioning going to be in our buildings. I wanna say thank you to Leland and also Casey Berry for their diligence last night and throughout today, trying to keep everything up and running. When things are that hot, you just never know when something's gonna shut down or just break down on you. I'd say the biggest thing we're just working through right now, and we're gonna deal with Johnson Controls tomorrow, is in our new addition at Forest Grove and our new addition at the junior high, we believe maybe some dampers are open potentially causing humidity to come in with the cool temperatures in those areas, we have moisture building up, so a lot of real humid rooms right now, so we're trying to get that taken care of tomorrow. Otherwise, buildings checking in, we're in good shape there. This morning, girls cross-country practiced at 5:30, football may practice tonight at 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock tonight, boys cross-country 8 o'clock tonight, and girls swimming is not as normal, and we canceled volleyball because, you know, with the heat, and girls playing, if we get too humid in the floors, we'll get wet, so we canceled kind of a scrimmage we had scheduled for tonight, so we'll continue to watch that tomorrow, we anticipate a lot of the same tomorrow. But again, just thank everyone for their patience and little grace and empathy as we go through these two hot days and the weather breaks the next day, so we'll get there, it's just warm.
All right, Ms. Presser.
Thank you. This evening, I am honored to recognize Kale Claussen, so Kale Claussen graduated last year from Pleasant Valley, and last week, we received notification that he received the FFA American Degree, which is the highest degree awarded by the National FFA Organization, and it symbolizes the countless hours of learning, leadership, and commitment to agriculture and its supporting industries. And just for a little point of reference, I believe Jacob Hunter came maybe last year to talk to the board about that, but just as a reminder, less than 1% of FFA members achieved this goal, and he is the second graduate from PV to earn this honor, and of course, we hope that you're second of many more, and you will be honored at Indianapolis in the fall. So if you would wanna stand up and come to the podium to be recognized, the board might have some questions for you.
And for the people watching, Ms. Presser, can you please say what FFA stands for?
Future Farmers of America.
Yep. I'd like to thank Pleasant Valley for working with North Scott, my, I guess my brother and myself, we've been the only two to receive the American Degree, so I guess it's kind of special, I mean, my brother, he got it two years ago, and I was like, okay, he has it, so I'm. I was always determined to get it, so, yeah, I mean, it's special for me, but like I said, I'd like to thank Pleasant Valley for working with North Scott. Let me go out to North Scott and take classes. I guess, some of the requirements, they were, you had to have 22 or 2300 hours outside of class, or outside of scheduled class time within FFA, you had to have multiple competitions, like at the state level, which I did. I guess, I guess one of my other requirements was, oh yeah, it was, you had to have 10,000, you had to earn or invest, or I guess it was you had to earn $10,000 in your supervised agriculture experience, which mine was swine placement, because I worked at my neighbor's hog farm, and so we bred sows, I had to feed every morning, vaccinated newborn piglets, tail-dog newborn piglets, and so I was there multiple hours almost every day, power washing hog barns to make sure they were clean and biosecure for all the newcomers coming in, so, I mean, it was a lot of hard work, but I'm glad I did it, and I'm glad that I got recognized for it, so.
Questions?
Questions from the board.
So, what's the, are you gonna move into agriculture?
Yeah, so currently, I'm at Northeast Iowa Community College, it's up by Decora, it's a small town called Decora. I'm studying John Deere tech there, so I'll be a ag mechanic for a John Deere dealership, and to go to that college, you have to have a sponsorship from a dealer, so currently, I'm on my on-the-job training at Sinclair Tractor and Durant, so, yeah, I enjoy it so far.
Well, I'd just like to say congratulations, I'm probably more into agriculture than anyone else up here, and, you know, I wanna point out that this is a very, very prestigious award, so I hope you're very proud of yourself and all the work that you've done to complete this. Future Farmers of America is not just about those kids going back to the farm, but it's about all the people that work day in and day out supporting our farming community and our farmers, so, you know, agriculture runs a lot around here, and I think, you know, we're more aware of that than ever right now in these times, but it's great to see amazing young people like you getting into agriculture and being a part of that community and be able to support the nature of agriculture, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So Kale, if you work for the implement when you graduate, will your college be paid for then for you, or how's that work?
Yeah, so currently, they're paying for me to go to college, and then, when I first went to college, I had to sign a contract with them, so once I graduated, because I'll graduate in May of '25, they will reimburse me for my college, so I get a small check every pay period, so. So I, I guess when I first went to college, I received a scholarship from them, which paid for my schooling.
Yeah, I think when you came two years ago with your brother, because he was online when you came to the event, and it was the kind of challenge to see if you were going to do it, and I think if, according to your mother, I believe you got yours faster than Cole, is that correct? Did you get it quicker? Just make sure Cole realizes that, please.
What advice would, you know, you were just, you're one of just two people that have had this, this, we're so proud of you, what advice would you give other students that might wanna follow in your footsteps?
I would say, first off, you have to join FFA, take your ag classes, and just be involved and work hard, I mean, I was as, I was as involved as I could be, I held the chair, or the position of treasurer on our, in our FFA chapter my senior year, I was the, they called it captain of the FFA Farm Squad, it's a group of students that run approximately 70 acres with the help of local farmers and volunteers, so I was the head person of that, was that, I mean, being a farm kid, that really opened my eyes to more stuff in agriculture, and like I said, you just gotta work hard, I, I guess I look back on it now and I realize that it was all worth it, I mean, I couldn't tell you how many hours I put in, I was way above the requirement, but, yeah, just work hard and be determined.
Not from the board? I think that, I think that must've got a picture with you.
Heather's doing that, Jacob Hunter did share a couple extra sentiments when I reached out to him, he said that Kale has really put forth a lot of effort and was very effective with his work to receive this honor, and he also mentioned your brother Cole being the first to receive the honor from PV, and he's now a graduate from Iowa State, and he works for River Valley Co-op and is already giving back to the community as a volunteer coach for the livestock judging team, this is pretty cool.
Congratulations again, we're really proud of you, and let's hope that you are on the several level following your footsteps.
And we'll keep following you also through your mother, and if you guys do not know, Jennifer Claussen is our administrative assistant in the counseling office out at the junior high, so we're very thankful what she does every single day, and we keep up on the boys very closely.
Thank you for coming in. Unless you wanna stay.
Anything else, Ms. Presser?
That was all.
And Mr. Hyatt, did you want, did you have anything or not?
No, we have more coming up later on the agenda.
Okay, wonderful, all right, then moving on, we will go on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda, if not, I will take a motion.
Move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second by Ms. Brockman to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, approval of bills, general fund.
Move the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $876,264.46 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nutrition fund.
Move that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $50,275.83 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Smith, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Elementary junior activity fund.
Move that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $9,255.65 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Conkle, that the elementary junior activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. High school activity fund.
Move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $3,788.65 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Canwisher, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Management fund.
Move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $17,463.65 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Capital projects fund.
Move the capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $48,492.3 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canwisher, second by Mr. Smith, that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. PEPOL or physical plant and equipment levy fund.
Move the PEPOL fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $6,780.76.65 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers, that the PEPOL fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions?
I got one on that one, so, in there, I saw a tree removal of $8,100, and normally, it's something, you know, it'd be something approved, but I just didn't know, is there like a bidding process that you go through for that type of stuff? I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
It depends on the size, so, something like that, that actually, that actually, that's the way they had to go into, they had to go into two different neighborhoods, so they actually had to have, we had to actually remove part of the neighbor's fence, because it's, the tree is on school property, it overhung into their yard, we actually had to remove their backyard fence, and they actually had these, the track machine, no damage to the yard, the yard actually dropped down, like.
I just didn't know as far as bidding process, because I know that, like, with the cities and different areas, there's a bidding process, because you get the different tree companies that'll come in, you know, they might bid $8,100, but you might have a company coming for $5,000, I just didn't know how that worked there.
Especially with this, with tree removals, there can be wide range of bids.
Right.
I know that, that there's a threshold, and when it goes above that, then you have to romantic to get at least two bids.
You can get two, four whole bids, not just like through email, you can get bids that way, but there's also ones where, on the price, you go out and actually get whole bids from them and have like a sort of bidding.
Kind of like board policy, then actually.
We get that too, but, yeah, if it's certain amount, we will bid out.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Internal service fund.
Move the internal service fund warrants 6607 to 6608 and ACH 3222 through 325, issued in the total amount of $326,209.36 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Smith, that the internal service fund warrants 6607 to 6608 and ACH 3222 through 325 be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And trust fund.
Move the trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $9,564.83 I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wheeler, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to old business, board policy review. Uh, Mr. Hyde, Ms. Kenyon regarding, um, five oh seven policy.
This was in regards to the language statement, I think, um, Mr. Camerash, or you had asked about us changing or updating. I believe it is updated in your board packet at this time. So, I don't know if there's any other information for us to share, if we're just doing a second reading tonight for approval or?
There's only one thing I had a question on, on the, there was a form that they fill out. Um, the form had, used to list, I didn't know if that was supposed to still say Bridgeview or whether it was, I was.
This is for T G K, yeah. Is it that form right there, Jameson, that Heather had?
Five oh seven.
Yeah, Bridgeview, it was in the news.
Yeah.
Right there.
E.
I just didn't know if that was supposed to be for all.
Really good question. We only have our transition to kindergarten program.
Is it just at Bridgeview? I did, I, I couldn't remember that, so I just wanted to verify.
Exactly.
We, we filled it, uh, full tonight. I just visited, like a great night and they, they got the numbers to pass it tonight, so.
Are there any question, other questions regarding this, um, the second reading of the updated board policy series five oh seven? If not, then update motion.
I move the board approve the revisions to the following board policies.
Second. You have to.
Ready to read them?
You have to read them, yeah.
Five oh seven, parent and family engagement district wide policy, five oh seven E one, title one, home to school partnership, and five oh seven R one, parent and family engagement slash building level policy.
A motion by, um, second by Mr. Camerash, that the board approve the revisions to the following board policies. Five oh seven, parents and family engagement district wide policy, uh, district wide policy, uh, five oh seven point E one, title one, home to school partnership. Five oh seven, uh, R one, parent and family engagement building level policy. I'll open to Ms. Damon.
Yes.
Mrs. Camerash?
Yes.
Mrs. Rock?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
And Dr. Rock?
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on to construction updates, something that we're always excited about hearing. And, um, Mr. Struse and Ms., and, uh, Leland, Mr. Zank will provide the status report.
So, really, two things, we'll just kind of even update tonight and then ask any questions that you may have regarding the projects. And I think we'll maybe look at, if possible, September twenty-third is an opportunity to go up, maybe do a district tour of the new additions, so you can see those now that they're finished. Um, but we'll kind of walk through. We do not have any pictures tonight for junior high or Forest Grove. Um, but if you have any questions or any updates, Leland, you want to share, please do.
Lex, we, Brian and I talked about this just last week and we're like, you know, we're really not ready to give a presentation or anything, but we're sure that people have questions. Especially since the projects ran so late, it's like we really need to have a discussion in case anybody does have any questions, so we can answer them. And just get any, anything that needs to be out in the open, so. Uh, but we did get scoreboard sign up. Now, that's just phase one of that, by the way. The one thing I didn't tell Brian, it, it came with seventeen boxes of accessories. Yeah, it filled, it filled half the back of a pickup truck of those boxes. So, I'm like, yeah, so, there's nothing to do yet. Uh, yeah, there's, there's an audio rack, that's a big audio rack, there's a video rack, uh, and there's like three microphones. There's, there's, there's a ton of stuff. And even when we talked to Dee about it last week, she said, you know what? We're not in a big hurry to get this right away because we have to learn how to use it. There was another school district that actually got one and they tried to use it at a football game like two or three days later. Halfway through the game, they, they figured out they didn't know how to use it. Disaster. So, she wants time to practice with it. And we still need to get power to it and the fiber and stuff to it. There's still a long ways to go. We're probably about a third away done right now, even though it's, looks great. And it's sitting there looking pretty, but it's, it's got a long ways to go yet.
So, that's the reason why we left the scoreboard there next to it, because that'll be our active one until we make the transition, maybe homecoming-ish time or so, maybe.
We did, and you can't see it in the picture, but on the lower hand right side, there is a little bit of damage that was done in shipment. Um, they're actually plugging modules, they're like modules that are two foot by two foot wide. So, there's actually three spares built into that system in the back. They'll take one of the spares, plug it in and take that one back and rebuild it and ship it back to us. So, if anybody mentions that there's damage to the sign, it's already been noticed, it's already been addressed.
So, playgrounds, kind of give you an update there. We're in good shape in terms of the being used then. You can see all those snow fences that are put up around, keeping kids out of the grass area where they put the straw down, the seating down. Uh, so now we just need rain to help that grass grow a little bit. But, um, again, thanks to Leland, kind of really trying to stay on top of these companies, getting them there finished. Uh, we do have two Gaga pits at Riverdale Heights and two Gaga pits at Pleasant View that we have on, we're gonna be ordering. Did you get, are two of them coming right now or did you, where'd you land on that, Leland?
They actually called this afternoon.
Okay.
So, they just, they left a message. They only had two in stock and they have two more coming in stock in like three or four days. So, the question was, the shipping on them is quite large. It was like, what's the shipping cost gonna be if we just wait a few more days to order all four at the same time or just order two now? And that's what we're waiting for, is to get that released. Because the shipping's, I, I'm gonna guess the shipping's gonna be very, very expensive.
But once those are in place, those three will be. If you have a chance, go out and see them, take a look at them. And, yeah, I was really pleased with Pleasant View, uh, because we have the existing, that would be the lower right-hand one, right? Yep, thank you, Heather. Where she's scrolling there, um, that's existing. It really does match the top one pretty well in terms of the two separate sites with the colors and the layout of them, so it's good.
What happened to the old playgrounds that we took out of the schools?
Those were all pulled out and they said it's, they said it's very difficult to try to save them. Because by the time you're pulling them out, you've got all the concrete and stuff on them, they just get damaged.
I just know from like different cities and stuff, you see where they sell them online, I just didn't know if there was a market or anything for that.
And we brought that up to all the vendors when we first started talking about this. It's like, what can we reuse? Is there any of this that we can reuse? And then, so then the thoughts and questions were, it's like, okay, if you're planning this out where it's gonna be fifteen years before you need to touch it again? Do you want to put something in where five years the piece is gonna fail and you gotta take it back out? And is there any place you can?
I think I was more on the side of, if there's, because I know like there's public surplus and others, other websites where, like you have other school districts where they might sell like their old equipment. That's where I was referring to.
Yeah, and that's, but that's, that's what I was talking about at first, though.
Okay.
Part of it. And you're also getting into liability issues too at the same time.
Sure.
If you sell something without letting us know that, like say the pipe was halfway rusted and half and also we got hurt on it, you get into those quirks.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, the bottom right here is the, the Pleasant View, um, playground that kind of have not been, correct?
That's, that's correct.
And the, the ground, that's been, that's been done?
Yes.
Curbing the ground and they also added, I think, three pieces of equipment that would be more inclusive as well. In that, in that, in the bottom right, yes.
Extend it on to that.
Yep.
So, those of you, they still have to move, it'd be like the pavilion, that still has to be moved, that's not done yet, it's still in the playground area.
When will that be? Like, when do you expect, I know the Gaga pit, the two Gaga pits may, once they come, how long do you take to install those?
They'll have to be assembled. And I was talking with Chris Welch from Forest Grove, he built a couple of them. He's like, it's one or two days just to build one of them. Each, each one has thirty boards, thirty, ten by, are they ten by eights, I think? Ten by eights. And they all have to be drilled out and then countersunk. There's quite a bit that has to be done to them. Because you don't want somebody to get hurt on one of the bolts sticking through. And then there's a trim piece that has to go, they go in and out. Quite a bit to it. He's, he didn't volunteer to help, so.
So, we're still, we're still a few, is the same guy who is doing the, the, the football, um, score, you mean Gaga pits, because then.
We'll be doing those ourselves, so.
So, we're still a couple of weeks out on that then.
Yep. The only thing we did do different, uh, we bought a big, the rubber mat, it's like a twenty by twenty mat that goes underneath the Gaga pit. A lot of them have the individual tiles that go inside the Gaga, but then they have a tentative slide. You're saying, yes, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So, this is a mat that's, it's almost like a truck bed mat. So, the Gaga pit sits right on top of it. So, hopefully it's all, everything stays in place and you don't have a tile slide on those.
The only other thing we'd have left would be high school addition, which is progressing. Right now, our, really, our attention has been focused on the junior high and getting those things done. And I think at the junior high right now, we would have, if, if someone asks you, we have our family consumer science room that is not done, they're working on that right now. That was the to, or, uh, total revamp of that entire room. Really gutted and putting new in there. Probably still a few weeks out on that project for sure.
Say in October.
Yeah. That'll, that'll finally be done. But our teachers are working through what that looks like. They have units designed for it, so we're okay there for right now until like it's done. So, they've been very good. And we have one science room out there that they're getting closer to where, um, it was one of our existing rooms that was designed to be a science room, but was not a science room at that time. We were using it for a math room. So, they took out the floor, put new, the water in for the lab stations. That's being completed now. And then we have one more space right across from the old office, room sixty-one sixty, sixteen sixty-one. That'll become like the professional development room and also the health classroom, the big space, because it's wide open, kind of like this would be. So, that's kind of a storage location for everything right now. So, when we get done with the project, that will be done too. But other than that, we're, we're in the building, that's what we're at.
The biggest problems we've had is, is like that whole new wing at the junior high was all supposed to be given to us the first week in June. And we got it just a couple of days before school started. So, there's still things that have to be done that didn't get completed. Like Johnson Controls coming in and doing their final checkouts. They, air and water balance guys that, they actually adjust all the airflow in the rooms and stuff like that. They can't get in because it wasn't completed. And now you've got classes in there, so how do you get, how do you do this now? So, we're running the same thing with Forest Grove, because Forest Grove ran late. So, what we, what we did in the last meeting, construction meeting that we had, we sat down with the architects and with Bruce Builders and said, we can't have this on the high school project. It's just, it's too hard. It's, it's hard on the community, it's hard on the district, it's hard on all staff. It's just not acceptable. And how do we avoid it? So, the high school project's even tighter yet next year. So, those are ongoing, ongoing discussions. We're actually having separate meetings from our job site meetings just to start talking about this.
So, when you had your discussion with Bruce Builders regarding the delay in, delay in the junior high, what were the reasons for why it got so late? Was it, was it unavoidable or, or could it have been preventable?
Those are, I mean, those are great questions. You don't know if, if it was just, we've talked about this in some of the other board meetings, it starts at the beginning. If one guy slides and then the other ones, that, let's say you start in March and that guy's supposed to be working from March till April first. And then he slides till June, what happens to the guy that had his whole crew there the month of May? So, it just throws everything off. And those two jobs, it was the bricklayers that really threw the whole job off at the beginning. And we're seeing the same thing at the high school.
Are they using the same company for the bricklayers or the same attracted people or is it different?
For the most part, it's all the same.
In the summer, we were waiting for two weeks at least. We got delayed two weeks because we were waiting for those two valves to come. So, that slowed down the project in terms of the air conditioning turned on in that new area. They didn't want to hang the ceiling tiles, didn't want to do a lot of those things until the air conditioning was on. So, that slowed us down a couple of weeks. It's just those type of things that just get you behind it, you can't catch it up.
How are they about getting noticed that they are behind, so we're not going to be?
That's why we're pushing from our side, because it's not, and I'll just be honest, they're not. It's almost like we're, and that's, that's our question, is like, are we seeing it different from what you're seeing it? If you are, convince us or not, you know, what's, what is your game plan? Because what are you seeing that we're not seeing? Because we have concerns. So, if you don't, and we think you haven't handled, great, but we're in good shape.
Give you a good example, this summer, they started tearing about family consumer science class and we sat down and said, okay, what do you think the date's gonna be? And by July first, we're like, okay, we're not gonna hit this date. So, we're calling the teachers, saying, okay, what does this look like if you're not in for two weeks? If you're not in for four weeks, you know, what does that look like? So, at least we keep pressing those conversations all the time. It was, we meet every single Wednesday for a construction meeting. Okay, where are we today? What's your plan for tomorrow? And how do we just try? It's, it's tiring every day asking that question, trying to see.
Yeah, because especially with that one, towards the end, we're like, tell us early so we can plan for it and make arrangements. If we need to move classrooms around or move people around, we can do it. Don't, don't tell us a week before school starts. We can't do it that fast. And it's just, it's way too disruptive. So, the high school's gonna be, it's gonna be a bigger challenge yet.
But as soon as we're done with this, we'll get focused really hard on that one and see what can be done. So.
Given the timeline and, and, and the significant, significant importance of the timeline, you know, there are contracts that you can get where they are delayed by a certain amount. They, they give you back money or they do something if they don't meet their deadlines.
Correct.
I know we have not had that in the past.
Playground actually has.
We did, okay.
Yep. Because we're actually, we actually sent them a letter last week, let them know that they were not in compliance with the timeline. Because that was supposed to have been done about two weeks ago, complete. And that we're looking at possibly invoking that. Doesn't mean we have to, doesn't mean we will, uh, but we can. But at the same time, we want, we want to understand what was the reason for the delays. They, they, they did good work. It's just, once they left, they did great work in the spring, then they left and they didn't come back.
Right.
Then when they came back, they weren't hurt, so.
Um, and so do we have that in, will we have that in the high school project? I know that we've already signed it, but is it in?
It's already signed, it's not in the high school project.
Is that something that we should consider invoking in the future?
And we actually.
I know that we, we usually get FRK to help with that.
Yep.
I know what, I'm sure FRK will give you reasons of the plus and minus of doing that.
Well, the biggest minus is increased the cost of the overall project.
The overall bid.
Because the contractor has to build that risk into it.
Sure.
So, for a project that large, about a half million dollars, it could, it could be sizable. It's just the playground, I think, was like thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars a day, a day or a week.
It was a day originally.
Yeah, it was a day.
The thing is, get situations like act of God, or the amount of rain, you know, the weather and help. So, I've been covered in those cases anyways. The bricklayer thing, I was gonna, I was talking to Leland about this, for the last year, I've been trying to find a bricklayer myself and I've been able to. Thankfully, it looks like there's some tail off in business because they finally got one, but labor's been extremely hard to find nowadays.
So, another thing we were talking about too, it's, it's not just the trades that are being affected by this. The architects are having trouble finding staffing. IMEG, which is all the engineering firms, they're having, it's the same, it's, it's the same story as the trades. They can't find people. So, they're not being very selective. So, people that are getting into the trades or getting into engineering and stuff like that. Fifteen years ago, probably wouldn't have made it. Which leads to, there's quite a bit, quite a few mistakes are being made, for sure. So, I, I wish I had a great answer for that one, but.
One more question. There was a grant that we had back in last year where they had the, uh, safety and security. Have we started doing some of the upgrades and that type of stuff in some of these construction projects?
Yes. So, for example, the junior high will have all those, all new analogues, or not analogues, digital, sorry. Digital will all be put in those and they're, we're pretty far along on that project. Bridgeview's completely done, I believe. And Forest Grove will have all the digitals. All buildings will be digital.
And they were doing some of the glass windows and stuff too with the film and.
So, the conversation we had. So the conversation we had was, do we put that on the entrances of our buildings and what the cost and what that was gonna be? Around, it was like forty-five thousand to all of them. We decided to hold off on that until we get done with the junior high and see what that looked like with the entrance, but that's something that we could be looking at down the road. But we have quotes for it.
We did a lot of that with, with stuff that we've been doing.
Exactly.
And it's interesting though, because, because we talked about the film, what's the lifetime of the film? Uh, but some of this, yeah, I don't know if you've seen it on the high school, so that sign, it's a film's appealing. And it's only about, we've got three years old.
And that's not a safety film at the high school.
Safety film, but just a final graphic.
Thank you very much, Leeland. And then we'll, we'll come up with a date that we'll, everybody, so we can go and.
Yep, at the end.
September, yeah, September, October, December. Um, moving on to the, uh, next order of new business is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, uh, I'm sorry, start of the year updates. So, um, that's going to be, it's like all of our directors.
So, just to give you a little update, I thought this would be a really good time to just personally thank Bernie, Jill, Tony and Leanne for their work in the last two weeks. I know they mentioned some of that that was gonna be happening, but we have had a very good start to the year, uh, really good vibes in terms of what things are happening, so. I'm gonna turn it over to, I don't know which one would like to go first, but then kind of share about some highlights from this last week, just as a board, you can hear those, and then I'll wrap it up at the end.
Good evening, everyone, um, first off, Jill and I would really like to thank Chris Smith and Don Tagan for the countless hours that they put towards, uh, the day that we had with our paras. Um, all the, behind the works stuff that happens that you don't really see is amazing when the product comes out. Um, on your desks, you have our new guide for our paras, uh, this is the first time we've had this and it came in very handy during the in-service that we had with them. So on August twenty-second, we had over a hundred paras that came to our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five foundational para in-service. It served two purposes, one, you heard your voice and you said you wanted professional development, and two, it allowed us to set the standard and the expectations for the year moving forward. So, they spent their mornings with us from eight to noon, and then for new paras who hadn't yet been to their buildings, they got to go for an hour and a half in the afternoon to meet their teacher, to find out where they're gonna park, to take building tours. Possibly review the IEP for one of their kiddos, so just giving them an opportunity to get comfortable in the building before Friday morning starts and you go full speed ahead. The day was very well received, um, the feedback we got in the moment and then from the principals after was just an absolute overwhelming thank you, this was amazing, we really appreciate that you guys did this for us. Our gender cover topics like attendance expectations, breaks and lunches, cell phone use, dress code guidelines, how to access time card or time clocks. Because a lot of them didn't even know where they were, so it was just that basic general HR information that maybe they had or hadn't received in the past, and for our new paras, it was really helpful for them to already have that information ahead of time. Um, one other topic that I really wanted to get in front of them was our four oh three B, I think it is highly underused. And just giving them scenarios to show them, if you take the cost of a Starbucks cup coffee a day and contribute to your supplemental retirement, this is what you potentially can do for yourself when you're ready to retire down the road. So just getting those types of things in front of them to know, how do you do it? Come ask HR, whatever those things might be. I would say that that para manual is just the start, um, we're moving on to other things, uh, past that, but Jill and I. Still wanna work into that and Brian has great penmanship to correct my spelling errors, so thank you to Brian also for participating and making sure that para manual was, was exactly what we needed, so.
Absolutely, so then we kind of, we capped off the rest of the day with just really digging into, um, training our para educators, and it's really important we use the language para educators. They are para educators, not aides or helpers, para educators is what we call them in Pleasant Valley, and we talked through, um, really just how you deal with people every day, right? So, um, while we might not be blue carding or fully certifying all of our hundred-plus para educators to go into restraints or holds with students, we really want them to understand. How do you de-escalate a situation and how do you just deal with people every day? So, um, we went over just basic classroom management, ways you can deal with people, keep, keep kids calm, basically all those de-escalation strategies. And then we talked a little bit about their roles and responsibilities, um, and what like a teacher would do and what they do as para educators, so that's how we finished off the day.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we really touched on throughout the entire morning was mental health, right? Making sure that your mental health is good because some kids that you deal with are going to, what was, what, what's the word?
They're going to flip their lid.
Flip their leg, yes, that's what it was.
Dr. Daniel Siegel, he's a wonderful brain researcher out of UCLA that talks a lot about, I kind of have a fangirl crush on him. He's not real exciting, but he does talk about neuroscience and how we have to get our brains are regulated when it's like this, not regulated when we're like this, so we practiced that.
Yeah, just talking to them about different things they can do from a mental standpoint, to breathe, take a moment, go back to your, go back to what you're doing, knowing that they have difficult jobs at times. So, um, it, it was a great day and I think overall, we're just ready to build for next year's, so.
I think their next challenge would be what it would look like when we hire someone mid-year, you know, how do we onboard them from the HR standpoint, and how do we onboard them from a professional development standpoint also? So that'll be the next phase we keep moving forward.
I was gonna ask a question about that because at the welcome, and more than a few folks come up and kind of like, I need to check in, do you know where that is, like. Ain't off, just kind of like pointing down the hallway, so.
Yeah, and so that's something that Chris and I have been talking about is, you know, how do we, do we do twice a month onboarding and orientation so that we know as we're bringing them in, we have scheduled days and scheduled times? So that we can be prepared from the Belmont side, but also for our buildings to be prepared for a day before start for people coming in, for them to be able to do the tours and get keys and badges and everything, so.
Yeah, one of our biggest fluctuations in the, in our staff is our para educator, as you guys know, we've mentioned it several times. And I know that there are exit interviews that are done when para educators do sign, um, wondering if you incorporated any of, any of that into your, um, introduction here to make sure that. To try and allow for people to retain them, I guess.
Yeah, so one of the things that I did talk to them about is we're, I'm sending a survey out, and it's a survey for one thing, but it's also a state interview. For my senior paras who continue to come back year after year after year, why? What is it about the, the district, what is it about your role, what is it about what you do that keeps you coming back? And then having touchpoints with our new paras at least first two weeks, thirty days, sixty days, and, and having those one-on-ones with them to see, is everything going well? Is there something, you know, I, we, I kept saying, you know, we can do better, you just gotta tell us, we've gotta know what we need to work on. So having these state interviews with them in their first sixty days hopefully gives them that voice that they need so that we know where we were missing that mark, and if it's something we can correct, let's pivot. If it's something we can't, well then we need to discuss at a higher level, so that's right now the plan for me, for the new, new paras. And then for our senior ones, it would be a state interview, that's, that's a, a digital survey that they would take.
Yes, just looking through here, the one thing that I have a question on is breaks and lunches for the paras. So it talks about like thirty minute, thirty minute unpaid lunch, and, uh, paras are unable to leave the building for breaks. So my question there is, is if they're not able to leave, like say they go to Mc, go to McDonald's or wherever, my question there is, how many times are we, I'd like to know this, not right now, but like later in the year. How many times are the paras having their lunches interrupted because, hey, we need you in a classroom or we need to pull on you? That, that'd be one thing I'd like to know, because if, if that's something that's happening, then that's something we need to look at, okay, well, do these need to be paid lunches or are they unpaid?
I think what happens sometimes unfortunately in education with not only paras and teachers is when you're dealing with our students that have the most significant disabilities. We try really hard, and Tony knows this as being the building principal, to say, you have your thirty minutes, go, go to the lounge, go away. I think sometimes what happens is teachers and paras don't feel like they can leave, they, they need to know they have permission to do that, so James, and I think to answer your question. We need to keep making them know that they have permission to walk away and someone else can handle the situation. That's not always the case, but I think sometimes that is the case with teachers and paras, they feel bad, like walking away to take the break from the student they're working with.
I think what we can do from the payroll perspective is if we have individuals who are continually putting in the notes, do not take my paid lunch. It's going back and finding out the whys behind it so that we can start tracking that and seeing where the data's going us.
In addition to the playbook and the training that you did in a group format, what does it look like as far as hands-on training? Um, especially for our students that have significant behavioral needs and, um, um, how the paras are supposed to deal with those students because every child is different. And there is unfortunately not a cookbook to success when it comes to, um, helping children navigate those strong emotions. And so, in those cases, you know, providing the necessary support to paras so they feel like they are able to handle those situations. Probably is a big component, helping them honestly.
We have, um, seven CPI trained the trainers, so like a lot of surrounding districts, we use the crisis prevention institution. So we've invested a great deal of money and five of them are deans, one is me, I'm counting wrong now, and two are sped instructional coaches, and really the goal of that. I mean, to be a trainer, every two years you have to go to a quite intensive, to become an initial trainer, it's like ten days of intensive stuff, how you deal with situations. But really, the more you can practice and do those scenarios, the better, right? Because you can learn all that stuff out of a textbook and you can practice in theory, but the goal with those trainers in our district for me personally, and it's, it's really just again, finding time. Is to, each of those, our buildings has kind of their assigned person, um, and really to, to do kind of bursts of little professional learning along the way. And it really works well when you have a student situation to walk through, like a real student situation, so my goal, Catherine, would be like. We have Johnny who continually is, is showing a pattern of behavior, um, and throwing chairs or whatever, so how do we simulate that after school and like practice that in the moment with people that are trained to model? Like this is a response you could try, let's try it, like you pretend you're, you're Johnny and let's get over here and try, how are we gonna react? What it, so it's really helping people realize you're not always gonna do it perfect, right? Every, every child's different, but the more you can muscle train your memory about options you might try to keep everybody safe, the better. So really the intent would be like to offer those bursts of kind of that on-the-spot coaching. I would love it if we had behavior specialists in all of our buildings that could just do exactly what we're talking about, and that's, I mean, when you come from a really big district, that's what you have. It'd be nice if we eventually could have that, um, we might not need that here, you know, we don't have tons of, of behaviors, but we're starting to see more and more, and we need to support the general education teachers as well. As the special education teachers, and how do we deal with that?
The sort of those bursts that she's talking about is when we have those early release days that is for professional development for our teachers. How do we create some trainings for our paras so that they now are getting that hands-on type of training as Jill starts to see these trends in behavior? And we can start actually modeling it to what we need as opposed to this just big umbrella of training that may or may not impact or help them, so that is one thing that we have talked about.
Remind me, when you do your CPI trainings, how many actual pairs do you have in the room at that time?
Um, we never, it's never, they suggest to never train more than like fifteen people at a time with two trainers, for that reason. Because you, you actually practice going into the restraints and holds and how you might react to a situation.
I had volunteered the other day and they, they take me up on it, so.
To practice a hold. You'll get a practice at the end of September.
Bridge between those activities you mentioned and the fact that I am now Monday going in to work with Brian. And, you know, is someone with me? Or even like checking in to be like, it's not, I love how you implement that positive behavior. I mean, are now Brent through something? You know, let me help you, I'll step in and show you so they can see it, just because, you know. You can be trained, trained, trained all you want, but it is, it's kind of nerve-wracking when you're working with a child who's in crisis and to have that faith that you have the skills necessary to get them through that crisis. And that's where I see a lot of difficulty sometimes because it's like, really, he's got a lot of learning to learn, because I don't know if I trust you. Because if you haven't seen the end outcome of how that behavior plan does actually support the student, it's hard to trust it, and sometimes you fall back on maybe habits that you've used in your, um. You know, past experience that may not be effective or may actually increase the behavior with that child. And, um, I know that's, it's extremely challenging because, you know, wouldn't it be awesome if we just had extra people walking around to do that? But it's just something that I wanna bring up. I wanna bring up, and maybe, you know, we have teacher leaders, is this something for senior para educators, that we could say, hey, you're a para leader and, um, you know. We got Adrian coming in, can you just spend Monday with Adrian? And again, we're short, I'm not proposing solutions, I just, um, have that question because I do think, um, I see in my line of work, um, not being able to provide enough training as a reason why I lose.
Yeah, we've talked about, we talked about the para mentor program, um, unfortunately, we ran out of time to get there before the school year started, but it hasn't come off of our agenda. So that is something that is important for us is to take those skilled para educators who have been with us for, maybe not even long, but they've just shown that they have the skill sets to be able to do what we need them to do in those crisis moments. And how do we incorporate them into the training, because they have the, the real world scenarios that I as HR don't have, right? So how do we bring them in as mentors for our, it doesn't even have to be our new paras, it could be paras who are new with a new child, and that has different behaviors that, that they haven't had in the past. So, those are things that we're trying to put a matrix together to see how can that work, but it's definitely not off of our radar right now.
There's also positions, what we moved to up north was registered behavior technicians, and it doesn't require a certified V C B A licensure, the behavior, board certified behavior analyst or analyst. And that's a route we could go to, right, with that certification, and that would kind of pair with what Leanne's talking about, having kind of those, not senior paras, but those that are, are really skilled in behavior and like behavior. Maybe pushing them to get that certification, and do we have some of those people certified across the district to do that modeling? And I think a lot of times our teachers and principals will take it upon themselves to sort of model right at first too, knowing that we don't necessarily have the para educator mentor, you know, and they'll. They'll try to do that, but we always can improve that piece, I think. It is a puzzle.
Thank you very much. Tony?
So like I said, uh, we have a lot to celebrate, grateful for everybody involved, it truly takes a village, and the first thing, I'm sliding this one in a little bit extra. We had an amazing eight hundred and twenty-two Spartans participate in the summer reading program this summer. That blows past years out of the water. And that is just a, an incredible testimony to our parents, to our kids, um, finding ways to instill the joy of reading in kids, not because you have to, but because you want to. And you want to be a voracious reader and learner. So I just wanted to throw a shout out to everybody for that and, and make everyone aware of that, huge celebration. Also, we had elementary meet and greet recently, it took place just, um, on Thursday of last week, welcoming students back. That was, again, different, um, as you know, we changed our kindergarten screening, so that's something I wanted to talk about a little bit. We had three hundred and sixty, approximately three hundred and sixty new kindergarten students come join us, we screened all of them. Um, with the exception of students who had preschool IEPs that we knew that were gonna need specialized, um, classroom support, um, this year. And so, a piece of that was that, um, the screening took place on Wednesday through Friday, we took in all that feedback last year that we talked about and reflected on from parents, teachers, administrators. And really, um, did a great job, I feel, with our teacher planning of getting that input and putting it into action for this year. So we shortened the staggered start time to two days from four. We have elementary meet and greet that took place first, but now tonight is the kindergarten only meet and greet, and one of the really cool. And one of the really cool byproducts of that, that I personally observed was, I was at one of our buildings and saw, you have day one of school and, and the rush and the unknowns and the excitement and all the things happening. And grades one through six already mostly know the procedures and routines and they're coming in. But our kindergarten teachers were in the hallways greeting some of those first graders that were still, it's only the second time they've done this before. And they were greeting them and to watch them personally greet those littles, get down with them and pass them along to their first grade teachers, lead them to their first grade teachers and pass them along, priceless. And that was just an intangible byproduct that was really cool to watch. So we had the staggered start, half the class starts tomorrow for kindergarten. I want to go back to the kindergarten piece. And then half on Wednesday and all will be here on Thursday in attendance. So that shortens that time period up by half. And again, just want to thank our, our PTAs have contributed by making the registration day happen, a gift of a book, just the support that has gone into in really kind of customizing this and making it special for our kindergarten students who are beginning their journey with us for the most part, unless they were in preschools. New method of curriculum updates for all elementary grade levels. We're trying to ramp up participation, so we're developing, thanks to Heather Larson for developing QR code. She's been working with Thomas Lovejoy, our CIA lead facilitator and our leads at each grade level to put together a slideshow that is updated to make it succinct so that we can get an uptick in our parent participation. That's been running around 40%. We believe the reasoning behind that has been because meet and greet kind of steals the thunder, if you will, of the start of the school year. And maybe people don't get as jazzed about meeting people or about curriculum as they do meeting people. And so we're trying to look for ways to ramp that up. So I've said thanks to Heather, to Thomas, to our grade level leads for coordinating and communicating that. Last, the, the fourth thing I wanted to highlight was we had a very successful launch to Character Strong. Our character development curriculum that we have adopted and implemented. Something that we did, and this came from the same place, our, our para educators wanting to be a part of training. We actually invited bus drivers, food service workers, admin assistants, para educators, anyone who serves elementary students to be a part of the initial training so that they had a clear understanding of why. This has a connection to character counts. We know that that's, those pillars of character have been strong. There's a lot of interweaving that happens. When you talk about, they, they talk about traits and use words that you can hear a lot of overlap with that. Respect, responsibility, gratitude, empathy, perseverance, honesty, cooperation, courage. And we do, in grades kindergarten through fifth grade, we do what's called a kindness kickoff. There are a lot of elements of the bully prevention. Their Character Strong actually has a bully prevention embedded piece in that curriculum now. They're constantly looking at research and trying to address things like that. They also have methods and resources for chronic absenteeism prevention. So we're excited to do that. This learning and implementation aligns to our intended outcomes of the five-year plan that Bernie and I talked about. We're excited to see it come to fruition in the work we do with kids each and every day at the elementary level. Y'all have any questions?
Someone from the board.
Thank you very much.
Can I go back to the para document? I know there was some AEA trainings, those aren't going away, are they? As part of the AEA cuts the legislature decided to make.
AEA trainings for the para educators?
The para educators.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said ADA. AEA, the building stronger brands training and we're still offering this year.
No, this is the mandatory training.
Oh, sorry.
This is like mandatory reporter and all of that. I, I don't know the answer to that.
As of right now, they're not, they're all still online. Plans is staying there, we'll see what happens next year. They're still funding the AEA online across the state of Iowa.
Thank you.
Ms. Presskern.
I will do my best to actually keep it to two minutes. A couple of highlights. The first is a report on how the first day of school went at the high school. Last time we were together, Mr. Jones and a couple of his committee members presented some changes they were making to the first day. And it went over really well. One important data piece that we were paying attention to was the attendance rate on the first day of school. We were worried with that later start time for 10th through 12th graders that we would have the attendance slip. But we had a 99% attendance rate, which is right in line with first days of school previous years as well. So that was super exciting. I was over there on the first day in the morning with the freshmen and it was such an amazing way for them to start their day. The leadership that the Spartan Assembly provided to in guided tours throughout the building, answering questions, and additional time for the students to explore the different activities that are available to them to get involved in. It was really awesome. Our dance team performed, we, I don't know, it was just a really exciting vibe. Hopefully they also felt it was a warm and welcoming environment and a great way to start their high school career with us. We are seeking their feedback, so we'll be sure to keep you posted about how the students felt. But in terms of, from my vantage point being over there, that 99% attendance rate, I think, I think it went really well. Another, um, point that I wanted to emphasize were the return of open houses at our junior high and high school. They were very well attended. So the junior high spaced theirs out, they actually had two, one for seventh grade parents and then another for eighth grade parents the following evening, just to limit some of the congestion within the building. The seventh grade evening, I was there for that, was very well, I was actually there for both of them. But I would say much more well-attended for the seventh grade open house. They were checking out their Chromebooks, walking their classes, trying out their lockers. The staff were there in the classrooms to pop in so the parents and the students could meet them. And again, it was just a great atmosphere, hopefully giving those students a great start to their junior high career. Eighth grade, as I mentioned, was a little less attended, but still a great turnout. The, the halls of the seventh grade open house, they were packed. Eighth grade, not as much, the students already have their Chromebooks, so maybe not as motivated to get there. But Mr. Pekin also reported that they have the building open two days prior to the open houses as well. He said that a lot of the eighth graders came in on those days instead of the designated day for the open house. But still a great turnout. The staff and I know the administrators are definitely feeling good about the open house versus the videos that they had done since COVID. Open house at the high school was also very well-attended. We did that the same day as the eighth grade open house, but staggered those times in the event that parents had a junior high student and a high school student. We definitely tried out a couple of different things. The departments were in the ABC gym for a little bit, having demonstrations or just booths where they can stop by and meet their teacher in an informal way. And then there were periods of time where they went back to their classrooms as well. So there's a committee getting together to reflect and refine the open houses moving forward. But it definitely seems like it was well-received. But there are some things I think that we'll want to continue to change and work with as we move forward. Last but not least, I have the opportunity to be a part of PD planning in both buildings. And as Mr. Hyatt mentioned, he referred to the five-year plan. It was amazing to see the junior high and the high school levels really come together over safe, supportive and collaborative schools. And although each building has their own nuanced differences, we're beginning to speak the same level at the 712 level. And so it, it was really exciting for the CAB teams. The, what does CAB stand for? Collaborative Leads, Administrators and Building Leads? Something like that? Anyway, it's a team that gets together to plan professional development in each building. And they worked a lot late last spring and over the summer to really make safe, supportive and collaborative come alive with our August back-to-school PD. So definitely exciting things happening. Any questions?
Well, I remember that you had talked about the freshmen doing it in the morning on Friday and that you guys were going to like do little, what do you call it, like wait for them to get to know the building and little games of that. How did that all go this year compared?
It went really well. So that's where the Spartan Assembly members, they were each assigned to a group of 15 students. And then the teachers were also present in the hallway. So it was definitely an exciting atmosphere. People were enjoying themselves.
And I'll say from my perspective, I rushed out to the junior high for drop-off, make sure bus runs smoothie out there. And then you should rush back to the high school for drop-off. I rushed back and forgot that was just ninth graders to start today. I was like, there's still cars. Start of the day because there was nobody, it was awesome. So they all came at, I mean, parents were dropping off, but it wasn't your high school kids all trying to get in parking lots too. So that was unintended consequences, which was, so with this, let's just bring closure. I just wanted to come back to, first of all, thank you to Brent, Catherine, Molly and Doug for coming to our big kickoff last Monday. I greatly appreciate that and handing out those items to all of our staff and welcoming as they come in. That was greatly appreciated. I know you guys left a little bit early, but the whole, all the teachers and everyone, all 750 of them laughed and said thank you to all of you for what you do for us. So really appreciate that. On the screen real quick, you can just go through some things we shared that day, which are just some real highlights. We have 75 new faculty, you can see the breakdown there, 32 new teachers this year. So again, a lot of training, a lot of people that come into our family here at this time, so very proud of them. The next one, let's skip this one because I'll come back to that one there. You've already seen the junior high, these are some pictures we showed just to give them updates of where we were. Because people always want to know, staff want to know, because a lot of times parents ask them where are we at, what's happening? So it helps them see what's happening across. This is our theme from 2324. And as I told them that day, it was the first time we've ever taken time to look back at the previous year. And the reason being because we had challenged everyone to make a difference, not for some, but for all. And I'll share you on the next slide, there are so many highlights, go back one. That they had to sit back and take pride in what they did. And here's just a few, these are some financial ones. But remember, we went self-funded last year for the first, I mean, we've been doing it previously. But look at these staggering numbers, because we said now, remember, you're the stakeholders of our insurance plan now. I mean, if we are going to waste it, we're wasting our own money. And you can see where our savings on our health plan, we were 89% to budget at the end of the year. We saved almost $650,000. Two years in a row, 0% increase in our interest or our, our rates, that was great. Our rebate savings for our medication, for our X, usually when you're with a big pharma group, you don't get that money back because they keep it. Because we're self-funded with Med, with Med One, we are getting those rebates back to us, straight to our pockets as a collective group. So we saved $126,000 there. And we stress the importance of doctor on demand, because you do doctor on demand, it's cheaper than going to a walk-in clinic or it's cheaper than going to the emergency room. And you can see there of the 211, so that they would have gone to urgent care. 36 would have gone to doctor's office and 15 would have stayed home out of the 282. So our goal is to keep striving to move that forward. The next one, this is hard to see, but again, this was, we stressed to them the importance of generic drugs. And there's times you don't, you can't purchase generic drugs. We get that. There are certain times you can't go to a IV to purchase a drug. We get that. But again, as a collective group, how are we saving money? And you can see what we saved this last year in terms of where we're with prescriptions. And if we turn the Walgreens and CVS into high V, we could potentially save another $33,000. So again, the next slide just again, highlights, we are the shareholders. How are we saving our money? So it's important to bring that back to them, which is very important. Leave updates, remember, we had talked about personal days and combining our leave days and all those things. The next slide here, we always talk about personal days being used in May, personal days being used on Fridays. And we stress we have to stop doing that. And you can actually see what happened this last year on Fridays. We went from 273 down to 215 used on Fridays. You can see the next column over, the total number of days that were used in the last two. And then you can see the percent used. Again, our percent went down, number one is less days, but we also had more staff that we hired. There were still decreasing number of days that were used. And so overall, those are some big decreases because it has a good impact to our kids, making a difference when we're there at different times. And you can see the other days of the years, Mondays also pretty similar there. Thursdays, we had a little bit of a decrease on days, but since the pandemic, we're starting to come back down in some of the use of those days. So that's again, saving money. Next slide, this is just a really fun, this is academic highlights. That, this isn't tell the whole story, but there's some good things here. The first chart you see, if you take grades three through 11, where we do ISAS testing, our combined in math and ELA, we are at 91% proficient of our kids. We'd love to be 100%, but we're at 91%. That's phenomenal. Now, we'll see what the growth looks like later on this year, but that's, again, percentage-wise, that's awesome. 67.2%, you might say, how big is that? In all my years, I have not seen that number in math growth from fall to spring. The highest we had been since ISAS was 57%. Our kids and teachers are rocking math growth out of the park right now, which is great to see. That's a huge celebration for them. The one below it, the 52.7 is usually around 57%. That's the highest number we've had since the pandemic. So our reading score is coming back up. Also, seven national merit scores, 55% of our seniors, which you know by literacy seal, and 91% of our new teachers. Now here's, in the last three years, we've hired 124 teachers. We've retained 113 of them. 91% of our teachers are still with us. We lost eight in three years. That's, that's a huge accomplishment for what people do. The next one, next slide, some fun numbers here. 81%, um, this is, this is a wild one. Recognize everybody that's in that room, our food service. Our food service in the last two years has grown. We've served 300,000 more meals in two years. We increased last year by 80,000 meals at lunch. That's an 81% increase in our sales of our food service. And kids are buying lunches, which is cool to see. We had one person who's now been with us for 40 years, one of our maintenance guys. He has 541 unused sick days. Just again, the importance of being at work, that's awesome. So we celebrated that. We have 17, 1,737 kids in band choir orchestra starting in fourth grade or sixth grade. Again, that tells a lot about a school when you have that many kids in that area. 90% of our kids in the relationship and safety, in our conditions for learning, we improved 90% of the areas in the 10 areas that are there. Nine out of the 10 saw an increase last year. Kudos to the work that they're doing and stressing the importance of having safe relationships in our schools. Three-state championships and the 91% of the bottom was that 19 out of 21 of our teams won the state last year. A huge celebration, so that was awesome. I do have one new one I learned today. You and I personal finance class that we offer at the high school. So two years ago, we had 14 kids in the spring that took that exam and 10 of them passed it for college credit. This last spring, we had 52 kids take it, 47 passed. 14 kids, 52 kids getting three graduate credits. And if they pass the test, the $100 they had to pay is given back to them in a Visa gift card from the Iowa Insurance Division. Zero cost, three credits, pretty darn cool. So good. Our teachers are doing phenomenal things that are happening. Then with the next one, we went back to save and supportive back last year. We talked about these three things. We talked about at a board meeting here one time, about the three things we want to accomplish. So we're seeing those things happening. Those are continuing into this year with our five-year plan that Tony and Bernie have talked about. Those are where you know about that. And chronic absenteeism, what we told our staff was, last year we said, do you see me? Do you hear me? Do I matter? If we make those three things happen this year, our chronic absenteeism can take care of itself because you're building relationships. We stress that again this year. And now our theme for this year is making an impact. And what was handed out to by the four of you? And I can, if you guys want to take one of these, you are more than welcome to. You can see what the great contents that you handed out was.
You know, we had to tell the staff there was pink slips, right?
Some thought it was their bonus check. I'm like, oh no, sorry. They thought there was money in it, yeah. But I told them it, it does not violate any Iowa gift laws, it was all underneath the cloth. You open it up, here's the story behind it. If you take it out, and again, I have to give kudos. I said, in the world of education, families come together to do this. Literally stuffing 750 envelopes was my wife, my youngest daughter Megan and my mother-in-law. They literally stuffed all 750 envelopes for me. But the mirror is there to remind people, when you look at a mirror, you see your eyes and you look deep inside yourself. And what do you want, the impact you want? And what do you want? The impact you want to make this coming year. And what we asked them to do was, you can see there's an impact goal. We did this with our custodian. Everybody's got it. Our bus driver's got it. And I can give it to you guys as well. But to write an impact goal, and it can be professional, it can be personal. No one's reading it. So they filled this out there, whether it was personal or professional. There's a sticker in there to seal it back up. When they left, they put it back in the totes. Susan separated. All of our building administrators now have for their building. The last day of school, everybody's gonna get their impact goal back, and then they have to answer the last question, did you reach it or not? No one's ever gonna read it. I'm not gonna see it. No administrator's gonna see it. It's sealed. It's theirs. And the reason why is, how do you make yourself the better you, so you make sure that your kids are being successful that every day in school too? And you can see there, professionally, we put some things up on the screen we talked about, or personally. And I gave the example myself, you know, I might be good at self-management times, but I'm horrible at self-care. I'll go for a bike ride, but when I'm biking, I know I'm thinking about work the entire time. Well, that's not good either. But, so I'm managing my health, but I'm not caring for myself. So maybe that should be my goal, but it didn't matter. It's just how do you make sure you're best you every single day for your kids? So impact goal was our, our theme this year. Um, and we asked them, what's your impact today? And it was kind of cool. Around Friday at school, people were telling me what things, good things were happening. Hey, my impact today was this. It was just, it's a nice way to say, how are you making a difference in the classroom every day? Challenge ourselves. Because I tell you what, kudos to everybody for making a difference this last year. There were some highlights last year that were off-the-chart cool. So we gotta keep this momentum moving forward. It's pretty fun to see. So if you guys would like to write a personal goal, you can keep that piece of paper. Bring it back next time. I'll seal it up. I'll give it to you on the last board meeting of the year in June. So please do that. That'd be awesome. So that was that day, but again, thanks for coming. And we, like I said, we clapped, celebrated, and it was fun. And then we also went through and we recognize everyone who's got twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty years of, uh, in education. Cool thing was, one teacher said to me, he's like, Brian, I've only been here for two years, and I got a twenty-year service award. He's like, why? I said, because you're twenty years in education. It's just not here at PV across the board. So he was very appreciative of getting an award and recognition, not just with us, so that was fun.
That same front, I want to tell you, um, we're sitting at breakfast for the new teachers. This wasn't a new teacher, it was a new, our district teacher. They said that our orientation program was the best. Yeah, see, we've been twenty years of future already, so just, that's a long time.
It is. They do a phenomenal job. I mean, it is really, it is four great days, thanks to them. So, well done.
Thank you. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions regarding the start-of-the-year updates? Anybody? It's always, it's always a very exciting time, and it's great to see all the enthusiasm and the excitement of the new year at all of our schools, all of our buildings. So thank you all for all your efforts, um, for making it a, um, nice welcoming event for everybody, both new teachers and staff, teachers, I mean, um, students, everybody. Thanks again. All right, moving on to, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five enrollment.
So this is, remember, this is, we're August. This is very, 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 very rough in terms of where we are. Things between now and October first will change daily, as Debbie can attest when she gets phone calls, and things are always changing. But you can see right now, potentially, we could be up maybe another fifty kids or so from last year. You can see where we've been the last three years. You look diagonally, you can kind of see how we've grown, like from kindergarten last year being three-sixty-six, first grade's now three-seventy-eight. You can now look at those diagonals coming across. So those are our numbers. Pretty much grew every grade level for the most part by a few kids or a dozen kids, maybe. The next screen, I wanted to put this one here. This is important, because we always try to see where we are at and where are we going, and what scaryer trends might we be seeing. You can see our K through six, seventh through eighth, and ninth high school totals from the last three years. What I wanted to keep in front of us, PG, PV, not PG, PV projections and where we are at. I'm gonna start at the bottom. You can see we're at seventeen forty-six roughly in twenty-four, twenty-five. I thought, remember, my, just my world of calculations, we'd be at seventeen thirty-six this year. And ISFIS, remember when that company come in? They thought we'd be at seventeen thirty-three. So I don't care where we are at. Those are pretty close numbers when it's all said and done. Junior high, this is even more miraculous. Um, I'd like to say I have a glow, but a, uh, magic eight ball, but I don't. Nine thirty-four, nine thirty-four, and nine-eleven was ISFIS. Elementary is the one that I'm watching very closely, twenty-five forty-two. I thought it'd be thirty-three thousand forty-five. ISFIS thought even higher at three thousand seventy-three. The difference this year again, if you want to go back one slide, would be two years in a row, kindergarten, first grade, across everywhere is just low right now in what we're seeing. So we'll continue to watch that trend and see what happens there, but we're three-sixty. If you look at those two years, that's kind of really what's made the difference in that number. Um, if you go to the next screen here, oh, yes.
It's low across everywhere. What does that mean? Like, other districts are seeing the same thing?
Yes, yes. Eighty-one's been low.
Even nationally, at the kindergarten, first grade level.
Yeah. So this is always one that I want to keep on your radar. When parents might call you and say, why does my child have to go to a different school than my neighborhood school? You can see right now, this is all the buildings where we have five or fewer seats available. You can see sixth grade, we're sitting really good. And sixth grade?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade is, it's like everybody that, I mean, Debbie will say, hey, Brian, you're not gonna believe it. We got another second, fourth, or fifth grader. It's, it's like, and it's always a combination. They gotta have a second grader and a fifth grader. But those are the places where we get tight, and so we're trying to figure out, what does that look like? But that just kind of gives you where we are at in those grades. The next one, I always think this is very important for us to watch, this one and the next one. Open enrollment, um, where we are right now, you can see the first one on the left is, this year we're at four thirteen roughly. Is it two twenty-eight? I can't. Two thirty-six. Thank you. I need new glasses. Um, so again, coming in four thirteen, going out two. So that's, again, look at the years before. You can see we're definitely having more in, less out, a difference of one-seventy-seven to the good. The other one I always track is because the most two common ones that we have, Bettendorf and Davenport. Um, you can see where we are with those numbers in terms of what's coming in, what's going out, and where we're on the plus side of fifty-five with Bettendorf this year, plus side of one thirty-three, I think that is, for Davenport this year as well. So again, those numbers we watch to see where we're at.
I don't think I understand the enrollment one. So are gonna be a difference of one-seventy-seven from one-fifteen used to...
So what's going, what's coming into us? If you subtract, if you add one-seventy-seven to two twenty... Two thirty-six, thank you. That makes four thirteen.
How does it compare to the fifty-eight new students in the district across the board? I think I'm not understanding. Is it like...
They would, they would be included in that. So the open enrolled in would be part of all those numbers, the grade levels that you see there already. So if we were to say we had zero open enrollment coming in, you could take another four hundred off that five-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-two. Total kids in the seats are five, fifty-six twenty-two.
So they're not right, in and out. They're like, even the ones last year that were in and out are also in and out again.
Yes, yes. So great question. So when you go back to that next one there with the open enrollment, nope, right there. That four thirteen is not all new. There's three-hundred-and-seventy-four. So really new ones would be three-seventy-four minus four thirteen. Good question.
We could potentially...
That's not really true, because you had kids graduate, and then you had new ones.
Yes.
Because we have more than that open enrollment. I just wanted to say.
Yes. Good point. And some kids leave, some of these, but, but overall, we have four-hundred-and-thirteen kids open enrolled this year. Last year we had three-seventy-four. Some of those are the same kids. That'd be a better...
I'm surprised, like, how big that difference is compared to anything else on the chart. It's like, so...
Yeah.
Could be in a situation like last year where our certified enrollment went down a little bit. Four students served was up.
Because of the open enrollment.
The enrollment, exactly correct. Yep. And the next numbers we always watch would be, this would be homeschooled, kind of where we are, and the trend. So last year we had a hundred-and-nineteen families. This year we have a hundred-and-twenty-two. Again, some of those would be the same families, some could be new families, graduation, those sort of things. And you can kind of see where we're at elementary, junior high, and high school. The breakdown again, overall, pretty similar. High school could be up for two things, kids coming in from eighth grade, plus also maybe some more families electing to homeschool as well. So that's both of those. But overall, pretty comparable to what you saw the last three years as well. Really the last, since twenty-twenty-one, I'd say.
Will we ever be able to get some information on how many kids are not going to Bettendorf, Davenport, but going to, let's say, a public school?
So two things I would say. So first of all, let's go open enrollment with North Scott. We're usually pretty much of a wash with them, are open enrolled out. They're open enrolled into us, pretty comparable. The other one, yes. Last year, I think it was October or November, when we did the final, um, October first enrollment numbers, I'll bring to you how many kids we have at Morningstar, how many kids we have at Lord's, all of those. Because there's a state, um, report that we get that Andrew does, they'll have all that information that I can show you.
See what the trend is on that.
Yep.
Especially given this legislation regarding...
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have all that in October, once we do. That is it on those. Again, just, we'll see where the numbers come in on October first.
Well, thank you very much. That's, um, there's no required motion on that. So, uh, future dates, we have September ninth, which is a regular board meeting, um, at six PM. And, uh, that is Monday. And then we have September twenty-third, uh, is also a regular board meeting at six PM. Are there any, um, anything else?
So real quick...
Okay, we're gonna go try and find a time.
Yep. So first of all, September ninth, um, I will not be in town that day, so we might have Mr. Hyatt sit in his chair for me. Um, so I apologize for the first port we have ever missed, so I'm sorry about that. So that, and if we want to do a tour, maybe the twenty-third, if everyone's around, we could do like, roughly three forty-five, four o'clock start. We'll put a schedule together. Um, but we could tour the buildings, come back here, have a bite to eat, um, and then have our meeting at six.
Is everybody good on the twenty-third?
I would say like a three forty-five-ish, four o'clock. Probably start at the junior high and then work our way back in. We'll go to schedule it together. In, in closing, I do want to say, again, thank you to all of you for what you do for our kids. I mean, it's greatly appreciated. Very, very excited, so thank you.
Is there anything else, um, that we need to discuss?
I see.
I have, I have one quick thing, uh, related to Director Smith's question earlier about the tree removal. I found that its board policy eight-oh-eight-point-zero-one will be updated and approved at our February twenty-sixth board meeting this year. For, um, purchases of goods and services less than twenty thousand dollars, we do not have to get bids or quotes. Between twenty thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars, we have to get informal bids or quotes, so they can be written or unwritten. And for things, for goods and services over seventy-five thousand dollars, we have to get formal bids and quotes for over seventy-five thousand dollars.
How you might answer?
One last thank you. Thanks to Heather, who's really starting to rock these, uh, their videos and pictures and graphics and trying to really brand some things, which is, she's doing a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good...